Good evening, everybody. We'll call tonight's meeting to order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We will begin tonight, as we always do, with public audience. Is there anyone who would like to speak tonight? Joan.
Joan Coe, 26 Havastown Road. Over several years, the Board of Ethics, under the chairman Dave Moore, has continued to review the conflicts that may arise with Mike Payne, the president of Payne's Rubbish Removal, during his tenure on the Board of Selectmen. David Moore is vice president of Democratic Party, and Mike Payne is on the Town Committee of the Republican Party. Mike Payne has always inserted on his conflicts of interest form that he is president of Payne's Rubbish and has a contract with the town for rubbish removal and has a contract for collection of waste at the town dump. However, David Moore has asked for information that no other person is required to provide. The advisory opinion of the Board of Ethics, April 30, 2018, pertaining to Mike Payne, quote, "Regarding conflict of interest disclosures going forward, Mr. Payne, like other members of town government, must continue to file the required form with the town clerk," end quote. Mike Payne has always filed his conflict of interest form with the disclosures, quote, on the advisory opinion. To the extent that he continues to have contracts with the town or other sources of conflicting interests, he should note on the disclosure form, in addition to the nature of the contracts, an approximate amount of each contract, with the understanding that the town manager will make that document available to the Board of Selectmen, end quote. It appears to me that Dave Moore, vice president of the Democratic Party, has a vendetta against Mike Payne as a Republican, asking him to supply information above and beyond required by anyone else. The advisory opinion suggests that David Moore was concerned about Mr. Payne's candidate for first selectmen and the additional conflicts that would arise, making it almost impossible for him to assume the first selectman position if he were elected. David Moore should be asked to resign from the Board of Ethics. David Moore does not have any concerns about that Dave Ryan, president of Simsbury Meadows Performing Arts, SMA SIMPAC, does not have any conflict under the areas of exception with the town clerk, although the Meadows Performing Arts Center has become before the zoning board where Dave Ryan is chairman. Dave Ryan is on the Democratic Town Committee. It appears that being on the Democratic Town Committee gives you a special status in Simsbury. On December 5, 2017, the Conservation Commission sent a letter to Dave Ryan, in his capacity as president of the PAC, to alert him about spraying for mosquitoes on Simsbury Meadows prior to the concert, that it is no longer permitted. The letter states, and I quote, "Recently published authoritative scholarship has made clear that we were misinformed in regard to pesticide application. Pesticides are not different from other materials under state wetlands law and our town regulations. Any application of pesticides in a wetland area within 100 feet of wetland area or indeed any other place where the application will affect wetlands is a required activity that requires a permit from this body," which is the Conservation Commission. Dave Ryan has ignored the requirements to submit an application for a permit through the Conservation Commission and will continue to spray for mosquitoes prior to events. This is a violation of the law, and Dave Ryan will be fined for ignoring the application process if he continues to spray prior to the concert. The application for mosquito spraying at the Simsbury High School graduation at the Simsbury Meadows was denied, and there will be no mosquito spraying prior to the graduation. The PAC will be starting events in Simsbury Meadows, as noted in the agenda item. They will be required to adhere to their contract with the town and pay fair market value for all services. Since the Simsbury Meadows Performing Arts Center is a private organization with a contract that requires them to submit an audit report to the town with many other contractual requirements, the PAC should be required to pay fair market value for the use of the town land. The PAC should also not be allowed to use town parking areas for tailgating prior to concerts. Marijuana use should not be condoned. The Terrapin Band playing music from Grateful Dead on a day-long concert should have police presence for the entire event. There will be beer, wine, and food supplied on the property throughout the concert. The PAC and the town should be mindful of the impact of noise, excessive alcohol consumption, and use of illegal drugs at concerts, placing the town at risk for irresponsible behavior. Kure Leaf, the pot factory, will be coming before the Zoning Commission on June 18, 2018, at 7:00 p.m. for a public hearing on application to move from 100 Millers Way to 34 Hop Meadow Street, the CLMP site. According to the DEP, this site is listed as one of the contaminated sites in Simsbury. Does the town have any requirements for mediation on the site before the transfer of property? And all of my comments will be posted on Simsbury Patch, Twitter at Joan Coe, news feed on Facebook and Simsbury Forum topics. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Joan. Anybody else like to speak tonight? Mr. Kalishman?
Thank you. Robert Kalishman, Simsbury. The quote, "A seer and one of our sages, Mamanades. If I'm not for myself, then who will be for me? And if I am for myself, what will they say? If not now, when?" And I just thought I'd bring that up because these conflicts of interest, they have to stop. And these shots that are being made, one party making at another party, that should stop too. And it should be done from within, not from without. There should be enough dignity in the Democratic Party and in the Republican Party to tell people, hey, enough's enough. But things go on. I noticed in tonight's discussion, Mr. Ryan's name has been brought up. Through my participating and attending the meetings and see what has transpired in this board, I've seen where it started, where we had Tom Vincent running the show, Republican. Mr. Ryan was very, very critical of Mr. Vincent in running the show. Finally, Ms. Glassman, Democrat, came up. She appointed Dave Ryan, who just stepped off of the Board of Selectmen and needed someplace to go. So what happened? He became the Board for the Performing Arts. He selected each and every member and presented them to each party. And now I notice he's back tonight, and what gets me is proposed Simsbury Meadows Performing Arts Center board appointments, blank. Any other agency that reports people to be replaced or resignations has it on the thing, the person's name, and the appointee. For some reason, performing arts, they don't have to abide by the rules. Now, whether it's a rule or it's not rule, it should be a matter of ethics, self-ethics, that you don't do these things behind closed doors. And I don't have an axe to grind, but I'll say in front of them, enough's enough, Dave. You want the Board of the zoning? Fine. You want the performing arts? Fine. But you can't have everything. And a lot of people come to me, and they want to know what's going on there. And for a year, nobody knew what was going on there. And you people, every time he comes looking for money, it was given to him, whether it was $50,000. And one time, he's not here this evening, but Mr. Asquith said, that's the end of it. You don't get any more. And then this evening, I come in, Jerry Tonner's gone, and the first thing I see is Mr. Ryan lobbying our new Parks and Rec director. I didn't participate in the conversation. I could care less. But the perception is there, and it's wrong. And this, pardon the vernacular, this "I don't give a hell" attitude has to stop. It's wrong. And it's just getting to Mr. Moore. I've gone in front of the Ethics Commission, and I've been told, well, you can't go in front, if you mention anybody's name, we throw it out. And I've talked to people in the state, and they say it's useless, even these ethics boards, they're so politically tainted that it's wrong. And I'm going before the board, and people have made, and they've made decisions on me over the back fence. Two people live butt-to-butt, and they tell me they didn't discuss the case. And I wrote letters to Mr. Dave Moore, and there's a conflict of him being the chairman of the Ethics Commission, then he's chairman for John Hampton's campaign, and there's been ethics on the campaign. He's been cited, Mr. Payne, that is, and Mr. Moore, who was his campaign manager, they've been cited for unethical practices with the Board of, with the Connecticut State Board, in fact, the Chamber of Commerce.
That's five minutes.
Yeah, I'm close. And we had all those robot calls, nobody said anything. And we sit here, and nobody's going to say anything tonight, because Mr. Chairman, Mr. First Selectmen, they're going to tell you what to do from the Board of, from the Democratic Party. You're just a, you're just a figurehead.
Thank you. Anybody else want to talk tonight? Yes, sir.
I'm Dwayne Royce. Live at 26 Havastown Road. And I've been a senior for quite a while, recently retired. And when I retired, I was able to pick up pickleball. That's what I wanted to talk about, just mention this, that pickleball needs to be lined, needs to be added to town tennis courts and the school tennis courts. Just run down where we do have tennis courts. The Henry James Middle School has four tennis courts. Happens that the parking lots never fold there. You could, the seniors could play if we had pickleball lines there. There's plenty of parking at the Henry James Middle School. Simsbury High has eight tennis courts, which are being rebuilt, brand-new tennis courts. They haven't got the nets up, and they don't have the, any lines on, they can't be used yet. We could have, I suggest that we add pickleball lines to the, maybe two tennis courts at the high school out of eight. I mention that because we've got at least 24 seniors that are playing quite regularly pickleball. But at the high school, the tennis is a spring sport, and there's 13 girls and nine boys playing on the tennis team. But we've got eight tennis courts that need to be lined and nets put up. Simsbury Farms has five new tennis courts. The courts do have green lines added for youngsters' ability, because youngsters can't hit the ball as far. I'd like to see some, two courts of the five, two courts that have pickleball lines added to them. The Terriffill Park has two tennis courts. That's where I am able to play pickleball and some crack services, but yellow lines were added for pickleball. There's at least two dozen seniors that play two days a week there, in the morning, Tuesdays and Thursdays. And there's a lot of, the other courts, Windsor has pickleball, Granby has pickleball, Farmington has pickleball, and we don't have very much pickleball available here in Simsbury. And we do have a lot of seniors, and we'd like to get some active seniors. Just to finish up here, say more seniors, citizens will play for health and socializing if some Simsbury tennis courts were lined for pickleball. Simsbury youth are well-served by the town recreation department and schools. Simsbury seniors own homes that pay taxes for the youth, and we should get some more benefit from it. As I mentioned, Windsor, Granby, Avon have pickleball lines added to their tennis courts. Proposed and requested town, and I'll be talking to the school, I think it's later this week. I propose that the school in town add pickleball lines to four tennis courts in Simsbury. And I believe we, Joan has forwarded some signatures here, but I would leave them. Can I leave them to you?
Thank you very much. Thanks, sir. I actually had my first opportunity to view pickleball on YouTube about five minutes before this meeting, so it's very good timing.
I believe it's the fastest-growing sport in the United States.
I'm not surprised.
There you go.
Really? As for participation, yeah, when you go from zero to, it's huge.
Yeah, yeah.
No.
Well, invite me out.
Nobody play with it.
I'll come out anytime you want to play.
Nope. Be careful.
Anybody else want to?
I'll go see that.
Yes, Steve.
I will be quick. Steve Mitchell, 384 Hop Meadow Street, Simsbury. Reason why I come to talk to you tonight is something exciting. Thank you very much for being part of the Art Trail and the Selectmen Bike Ride that we had past month. Tomorrow night, 6 o'clock, Terriffill School, extremely important meeting. As I have served eight years on the Board of East Coast Greenway, I did not understand how every six months, the trail changed in length. There are two women that are riding their bicycles from Key West to Canada right now. They're in Connecticut. On Wednesday, they'll be riding from New Haven to Hartford. They will be skirting the south part of Simsbury. The East Coast Greenway was designated to go through Simsbury, through Terriffill, to Bloomfield. We'd like that to still happen, but that depends on you. As you may or may not know, the Department of Transportation, the state of Connecticut, is looking at ways to get from New Haven to Hartford. It is not the shortest distance from New Haven to Hartford to go through Avon, Simsbury, and Bloomfield. There are some measures that want to bring the trail over the ridge, Plainville-Southington way. We want, the town of Simsbury wants the East Coast Greenway to go through the town in a big way, economically and for a whole lot of reasons down the road, that you're going to want the East Coast Greenway to be designated through the town of Simsbury. I worked real hard to keep that through my years of being on the board. Down south, where the trail wasn't so defined as to where they were putting it, we would have people just show up at our board meetings from various towns, saying, please bring it to our town, because they know that ecotourism someday, 10, 15, 20 years from now, is going to be huge, going to be a big. When these gals come through Simsbury on Wednesday, they will not be going through the center of Simsbury. I don't know if you noticed this, but because of some, a bad experiment by DOT through 187 and 189, right after the flood of 55, the DOT, Department of Transportation, decided to put some limited-access highway out of 187 and 189 in Bloomfield, and it actually resulted in perhaps, you know, a death the other, about two years ago, to my brother's neighbor, Paul Hughes. And so, just pay attention. Commissioner Redeker said to me a couple weeks ago, what's going on in Simsbury? And I said, we're getting there. The town engineers of Bloomfield and Simsbury are working together to create a path to go from Bloomfield to Terriffill and from Simsbury, which that money is there, it needs to be used. But tomorrow night's meeting is all about how do we get from the Cracker Barrel, basically, to the soccer fields? So through Terriffill Park, or however, we're going to do it through Governor's Bridge. But that started, that process started, I want to say, four years ago, Tom?
Three.
Three years ago? So the Mylona McBroom, I think was the engineer firm?
It was an engineer firm.
Yes. So please pick up where that was left off three years ago. That's all.
Thank you, Steve.
Have a great day.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak tonight? Okay. In that case, we'll move into the First Selectmen's Report. So actually, staying on this topic, the preliminary designs have been completed for a multi-use trail, which is a joint project between Simsbury and Bloomfield. The path would be near St. Andrews Church in Bloomfield and continue north along 189, ending in Terriffill Village. Simsbury and Bloomfield are conducting an information meeting on June 12, which is tomorrow, Tuesday, at 6:00 p.m. at Terriffill School, 42 Winthrop Street. There'll be a formal presentation made at 6:30, and there will be an opportunity to provide public feedback. For the third year in a row, the town of Simsbury was recognized as one of the 20 safest communities in Connecticut. The town ranks eighth, according to the SafeWise Report, which was based on FBI crime data, showing property crime and violent crime were well below the national average. In my report that we'll be emailing out, there'll be a link to that full report. Starting later this month, renovations will begin at Eno Hall to improve the kitchen, construct additional storage space, and bathroom renovations. During construction, the lower level of Eno will be closed. Parking in the rear of the building will be limited. The elevator and the existing handicapped accessible ramp on the north side of the building will remain open during construction. The first and the second floors of Eno will remain open through the first-floor entrance of the building. The Board of Selectmen has formed an Economic Development Work Group to develop an ordinance to create an Economic Development Commission. Just wanted to give an update on the timing of that. The next step will be drafting the proposed ordinance with the goal of sharing that with the Board of Selectmen at our July meeting, and then potentially put it to a public hearing from there. There is more opportunity this month to enjoy the sculptures, taking up residence in town. Again, tomorrow, June 12, 5:00 p.m., there will be a free ice cream social on the grounds of the Simsbury Free Library. While you're there, you can pick up an Art Trail scavenger hunt list. The Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services and State Representative John Hampton are holding a discussion on the issue of depression in senior citizens. That will be taking place Wednesday, June 27, from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. in Program Room 2 at the Simsbury Public Library. And lastly, an item that I wanted to update the board on, there is a public gathering permit proposal that Jerry is working on that would bring a farmer's market to the Terriffill Green, where the gazebo is, on Saturday afternoons, I believe, this summer. So they're working through some details. We had hoped to get it to tonight's meeting, but I'm hopeful that it'll be ready in time for our last meeting of the month. But I wanted to give you an update on that, because I may have made a mention of it on SCTV, and I wanted to make sure you heard it from me, rather than, rather than on SCTV. So that's mine. Maria?
Thank you. Good evening. So for Board of Selectmen Business, we have included for you the upcoming meeting dates of a number of your work groups and subcommittees. The work group on the appointment of unaffiliated voters, we have pushed that meeting out to June 18, so that will be held next week. There is a personal subcommittee meeting scheduled later this month, on June 21. And the Economic Development Work Group was scheduled to meet the Tuesday evening before the Fourth of July, but that is a very popular week for vacations, so we have bumped that meeting up to June 25 at 7:30 a.m. A quick update on the Water Shortage Ordinance Subcommittee. The committee has continued its review of a proposed draft water shortage ordinance. The draft ordinance is being submitted to the town attorney for review. Subcommittee working with staff did develop a tentative timeline for seeing this through to potentially adopting or rejecting the ordinance. So during the course of the summer and early fall, we will bring forward a draft ordinance for the full Board of Selectmen to review. The Subcommittee will be recommending that we do a formal referral request to a number of outside agencies, as well as some of our internal bodies, including planning, zoning, conservation, the Health District, and our Culture Parks and Recreation Commission. We will also be sending correspondence to our community stakeholders, seeking feedback on the draft ordinance. We'll be seeking, again, those referrals to come back by essentially end of July, again, with dates working towards a public hearing to hold on the ordinance, with, again, the board hoping to either adopt or reject the ordinance by late September. So just wanted to include that timeline and update for you all. Regarding our streetlight policy agenda item, I have distributed a brief memo for you this evening with a recommended motion that would accompany this agenda item this evening. When we do get to that section of the agenda, staff will review that memo with you. Essentially, the purpose of the memo and the motion is to address the receipt of the ever-source rebate monies that were referenced in the cover memo. We did receive those, and this motion would allocate, or recommend the transfer and allocation of those funds to our existing capital fund for streetlights. So again, it's just an additional motion, and we'll cover that during that portion of the agenda this evening. For departmental news and notes, I'm happy to report that our library director, Lisa Karim, has been elected to the position of Vice President and President-elect for the Connecticut Library Association. And our library head of adult services, Susan Ray, has been re-elected to the position of Region 2 Representative for the Connecticut Library Association. So congratulations to both Lisa and Susan.
Yeah, congratulations.
For planning and development, two development updates. 690 Hop Meadow Street, which is the mansion right over here on the corner, down across from the library. The Zoning Commission did approve the Site Plan Amendment for the conversion of the mansion and annex to a mixed use. The structure will be converted into first-floor space, which will be restaurant space, as well as some office space. And the second and third floors of the mansion are going to be converted into seven residential units, studio, one-bedroom, and two-bedroom units. Also, 34 Hop Meadow Street, so that's the site of the former CLMP building. The Zoning Commission has received the application for the relocation of Kure Leaf. They're currently located over on Grissmo, and they are hoping to move into that location. And a public hearing has been scheduled on that project for June 18.
June what?
18. June 18. And lastly, just a reminder from the town clerk's office, that month, the month of June, is dog licensing month, and dogs are required to be licensed annually. And you can renew your dog licenses by visiting the town clerk's office during normal business hours. And also a reminder to bring proof of rabies vaccination when licensing your dog, and that the town clerk and animal control officer are sponsoring a microchip clinic, as well as an opportunity to license your dogs on a Saturday, and that is going to be on June 23 at the We Dog Fire Station. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Moving on now to Selectmen actions. Item A is tax refund requests. Is there a motion effective June 11, 2018, to approve the presented tax refunds in the amount of $691.40 and authorize town manager Maria Capriola to execute the tax refunds?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. That passes unanimously. Item B is the proposed stormwater connection ordinance. So at our May 30 meeting, we had a public hearing on the proposed ordinance. Just to remind folks, the purpose of the ordinance is to prohibit illicit discharge into the sewer system and provide a mechanism for enforcement. During our discussion, a board member proposed a small change to Section 10A that describes when the town can enter a property to investigate. Maria, would you mind just describing what the proposed language is to address that concern?
Sure, absolutely. So the proposed revision is under Section 10A, monitoring of discharges. And the proposed revision reads, "Upon a finding by an authorized enforcement official that probable cause exists, that a violation of this ordinance has occurred, the town shall be permitted to enter and inspect facilities." So with the town attorney's assistance, this was language that we developed to address the concern that an authorized enforcement official could only enter premises if, in fact, there was probable cause to do so. So this was the proposed revised language. And I had- And I had suggested that I didn't feel that this was a substantive change and the town attorney did concur with that. So we did not believe that there was a need to schedule a second public hearing.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Are there any questions or any further discussion on the proposed ordinance before we make a motion to adopt it? Okay. Is there a motion effective June 11th, 2018, to adopt the proposed Stormwater Connection Ordinance as presented, which shall be effective 21 days after publication in a newspaper having circulation within the town of Simsbury, and further move to authorize a summary of the adopted ordinance be published?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any more discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. And that passes unanimously. Item C is the proposed streetlight policy. So back in November of 2016, the town acquired more than 650 streetlights from EverSource and those lights have since been converted to LEDs, which have a number of advantages. And the town has saved quite a bit of money in that process. And the streetlight policy basically outlines the procedures to be used by the Department of Public Works for the operation, maintenance, and replacement of town-owned streetlights. Tom, any, anything else you would add?
I don't know, Eric. You really hit all the bases on that.
I did. I did. I took all your thunder there.
No, I would just say that the effort to convert the lights over to LEDs and to own the lights has worked out very well for us. We've saved a substantial amount of money. And again, I think the big part of this is we're able to provide a little bit closer level of service when our residents call to report a streetlight being out. We now have a vendor that's on call. We deal directly with that vendor. And if for some reason the service isn't done well, we have the ability to correct that directly. So it's worked out very well for us.
Any questions for Tom on the proposed policy?
I'm not sure it's for Tom, but are you sure we can do this? This isn't a Board of Finance?
Sure. So the second motion.
Yeah.
Sure, sure. So I'd be happy to speak to that piece. So we've received a little over $72,000 in rebate money from EverSource related to the conversion project. And we have, with a bit of digging, we have an existing capital fund. It's not a capital account, but an actual capital fund for street lighting. And part of the original proposal back in 2016, Tom had done some analysis and had indicated that it would be prudent to approximately budget about $15,000 per year for future replacement and maintenance costs. So we're not faced with a six-figure capital project down the road regarding streetlights as things need to be replaced. And so what we are proposing, now that we've received the rebate money, is that rather than just simply taking that in as a general fund revenue, that we would take it in as a general fund revenue and then transfer it to this capital fund for streetlights. So in terms of our process and what we have done here, I actually did a bit of a check-in with Sean Kimball and he said that, because it's not necessarily clear in the charter how to handle these sorts of things, but he assured me that the practice has been that he would typically, or his predecessors would bring this to you all first and then bring it to the Board of Finance second. So in the proposed motion, we're essentially looking, if you support that notion of allocating these funds to the capital account for street lighting, that we would, again, transfer that funds, excuse me, transfer those funds, recommend appropriation of those funds, but then further move to recommend to the Board of Finance essentially that same action. That, again, our understanding procedurally is that they've sort of been the last stop along the...
Yeah. It's not that I oppose the, you know, the idea of this, but during the budget process, over many years, we've accounted for savings that, you know, we have anticipated savings. So it seems like in the regular general fund budget process, we counted on these rebates coming back at one point.
If I could, there's a slight, I just want to make a little clarification there. We'd actually, within the project budget, incorrectly assumed that we could apply these, this grant, this rebate, back to the project. There's still about $40,000 worth of work that we'd like to do under this original project and most of which has to do with rehabilitating the light poles down in Iron Horse Boulevard within the parking lots down there. The light poles themselves are about 30 years old. A number of them are missing. So we'd like to use a portion of the savings, which we had always planned on accounting for, in order to do that work and then with the remaining balance to apply that for future maintenance and future replacement. One of the challenges that we have, that we didn't have before, is we used to pay a very high rate for the electricity for the streetlights and that included maintenance being done by EverSource and it also included the recapitalization work. Now that we are basically managing that ourselves, we have a management responsibility, which at this point has a high rate of fluctuation. If one of our light poles comes down because of a strong windstorm, we now are going to bear that cost. And at this point, it's a little, you know, peaks and valleys. So if we had an account that was not annualized, such as a capital account, we would be able to better manage that.
But you're saying this account already exists?
Right. Finance would be extending the capital fund into the future and using that as the basis for this.
Sure.
We can do that.
So the fund exists? This would be transferring the revenue into the existing fund?
Yeah. I guess it's just, since it's outside of the normal budget process, it doesn't seem like this is a way we've done this. I don't know.
Sure. And I can just allow myself...
Maybe I'm just confused, but it's...
So the...
It just seemed like this should have been accounted for. And I know we talked about it during your budget presentations about the savings we were going to see.
Right.
And we actually reduced some numbers in anticipation of that.
Yep. And like I said, it's been performing very well, where we're carrying, I think, $25,000 for our streetlight energy and maintenance.
Mm-hmm.
And if you can imagine, in 2016, we paid $131,000 and change on streetlights. So it's worked out well.
Right. I recall it happening.
This is just a way of saying that, you know, instead of in 18 years from now, making this just a large capital project again, could we essentially set money aside?
Does the, it says there, it's including a current year rebate. So this isn't just retro for, this just isn't the bonus incentive for the conversion that occurred and showing the results of that conversion? This is something that could potentially continue to roll forward each year or is this a one-time rebate of this size?
The $73,000 is a rebate due to the energy savings from the relamping.
Okay. So was it just for, it's just not from the pilot period, say, hey, look, you guys, we told you this would happen, you did it, this is the result of it. This continue to, could continue to roll forward?
The funds could roll forward. We are not going to see another rebate due to the energy savings. It's a one-time rebate.
But it could be smart budgeting, though, to take these savings and save them in this fund so when we get to have to make streetlight repairs, we're not stuck with a big bill.
Exactly.
Right. And I think just, so it's not confusing, this is actual revenue that we received. And ideally, for the current fiscal year budget, it would have been budgeted as an anticipated revenue and we would have shown a transfer going to this particular capital fund, but that did not happen, unfortunately. So this would sort of be cleanup for that, essentially. Again, we're taking in this revenue and then we would be transferring it to the capital fund. The savings on the expenditure side, that was accounted for, I believe, last fiscal year. So is that correct, Tom? That was accounted for last fiscal year?
Yeah. It was accounted for '17 and going forward.
And that would be on the expenditure side. So the savings within the operating budget have been accounted for, but then the $15,000 contribution to the capital account did not get budgeted for. So this would help, I think some of those funds would help for those last few years that we didn't fund the capital account. And then moving forward, within the context of next year's operating budget, Tom and I have flagged that as an item we'll need to, you know, bring forward as a potential new capital expense moving forward.
Yes. Well, now that you've explained it that way.
Illuminated.
That's a...
So I mean, I think...
[laughing]
So I don't think anybody would argue that, the intent of where the money should go and what it should be put for, right? We're just stumbling here over process?
The process.
This is process.
Because it seems like this is not the usual process.
And I'll be honest, I thought when we put through the original capital project, that we would be able to incorporate the rebate money right into the project without having to go through the additional appropriation. But it comes down to the appropriation sets the upper limit of what you can spend regardless of the income. And that's where my engineering ends and finance hat should have went on and...
Now you've got somebody to keep you straight.
That's right.
Yeah.
And from my perspective, the annual savings that we're seeing now because of the LED lights really is an ongoing yearly cost that we're not going to see. So this, I understand why we have to do it this way. It's too bad that EverSource isn't able to streamline a little easier, but we still need to do what we need to do and I think this does give us some potential future cash to do some things with, to better prepare for what's going to come down the road.
As long as you get the Board of Finance on board, I guess we're...
Okay.
Because I think it comes down to them, really, for...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not exactly our lane, but... Okay.
Okay. So we got to the memo earlier than we, we thought that's a good discussion. Any discussion on the proposed policy itself?
No.
Okay.
Well, like I said, I think it was part of the budgeting process and we all agreed at the time that this was, this was the way to go and, you know, we were very supportive of that. It's really just the mechanics here that I'm questioning.
Okay. Are you, are you comfortable with going forward on a vote on this tonight? Or are there additional questions you would have?
I'm comfortable going forward, but I honestly, I think it's the Board of Finance's ultimate decision to make, so...
Yeah. Ultimately, though, this would be a recommendation to the Board of Finance, right?
Yeah.
It truly will.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
Okay. And that case...
Chris? Because the wording isn't to recommend, it is to approve. I just want to...
Yeah.
That distinction, I just caught.
The last...
Okay.
With the supplemental appropriation.
So maybe move effective to recommend approval?
We could recommend the...
Well, there's, we're making two motions, right?
I think Chris was referring to the motion on the transfer.
The second one.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. You're right. The language is fine.
Yeah.
I just, I was looking for...
It's a little confusing.
It's fine.
Okay. So let's start with the policy itself. Is there a motion effective June 11th, 2018, to approve the town of Simsbury's streetlight policy as presented?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. That passes unanimously. Second, is there a motion effective June 11th, 2018, to recommend approval, to recommend the transfer of $72,322 in EverSource rebate funds from the general fund to the existing streetlight capital fund, Fund 527, and appropriation of those funds? Further move to recommend to the Board of Finance approval of this transfer and appropriation?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And that passes unanimously. Thank you. So moving on to item D is a...
I was going to stay right here.
Stay right there. And I won't steal your thunder this time. Why don't you set us up a little bit on background on the proposed fee schedule, both what you're proposing and also the reason why we need to do this?
Yeah. Well, unfortunately, the reason is, you know, world events and it's relatively sad that it comes down here in Simsbury, that for some of our larger events, we now have to be concerned with and worried about the potential for a terrorist act. And similar to what we've seen across the world, is there's always the potential for a large vehicle to come into one of our large crowds. The first time we began discussing this was last year for Simsbury Celebrates, where again, you can, we've all been there and you've seen how many people we have right in Hop Meadow Street. And working with the police, we identified this as an issue. And so last year, Simsbury Celebrates was the first time that we put our Public Works trucks essentially in the roadway to become that immovable object in the event that somebody wishes to do harm to residents of Simsbury. More and more, it looks like we have a number of events where this is going to be necessary. At this, at this point, we've done it for Simsbury Celebrates last year, we did it for the Memorial Day Parade this year, and most recently for the Iron Horse Marathon and Half Marathon, or Half Marathon and 10K. What we would like to propose is that for town events such as the Memorial Day Parade, we do that under our operating budget. For events such as Simsbury Celebrates, the Simsbury Celebrates Committee paid the direct cost. But for events such as the Iron Horse Race Series, for some of the other events that we do down on Iron Horse Boulevard and throughout the community, just the same way that the organizers pay for extra duty officers, they would be paying for the use of our large trucks. Our trucks are only as recommended by the Police Department. We are not the ones making the decision of where and how they're going to be situated. The only thing we have done on our staff is we've made sure that they're actually filled with sand as ballast and we also attach the plows to them, which fortunately, at this point, you all know why the plows are on in May, in June. But that's part of the package. We want to make those vehicles as large and heavy as they can be.
So Tom, is this going to be a requirement?
This is going to be a requirement as, as set for, as set by the Police Department.
Okay.
Okay.
And it works out well because our staff and the Police Department work closely together all the time and during an event such as this, they have the radio so they can communicate. And especially for something like Simsbury Celebrates, where you have that shift.
Right.
It does come in handy to be able to communicate.
You folks, I mean, we mentioned at last meeting with you, folks were clearly present at the Memorial Day Parade and I think added to the parade, too, for a lot of people's side. How many, how many trucks were there again?
I believe there was four at that event.
There was four? And then each of those had one staff member?
One staff member.
Member, okay. And that, we did bear a cost for that, that event. That wasn't done out of goodwill, no. So what is the, so what is the average, so that event was probably shorter than Simsbury Celebrates, I think. What's the average cost you think is coming out to? I think it's in the, wasn't in the proposal, so...
Yeah.
Based upon the ones that you think are going to be the, events that you think are going to be the ones that would be adopted for this type of application of these trucks, what do you think that cost is?
And what we're looking at is just the, the cost for the staff, the trucks, we own the trucks, the amount of fuel they use is the minimus. We do have a four-hour minimum for any weekend work when we call them in.
First four hours, okay.
And then we do have a difference between Saturdays and Sundays and holidays. Sundays and holidays are a double time. Double time, the rate for our employees is in the range of $60 to $72 an hour, depending upon which staff member is out there. 72 would be the extreme. It would be for one of our crew leaders. Usually, they're not the ones who are going to be taking that overtime. On Saturdays, it's $45 to $54 an hour. And the way this is set up, that first four hours does have a little bit of extra in it and it's so that we don't have to nickel and dime and worry about which staff members are there. And we are hoping if that does evolve into having a fund, that will then offset some of the other costs for, such as the Memorial Day Parade or other situations where we may be called in. And again, I would just reiterate, it's sad that we have to be talking about doing this.
I understand.
But I can tell you that our guys have really taken it to heart and want to be part of making safety.
Although I appreciate the policy wording as well and Eric clearly outlining your expectations of the team and stuff, so...
Okay. Any other questions or discussion on this item?
My only comment would be, I agree with Tom. It's very sad that we have to do this. I think it's a, it's good that we can do it and I know, I noticed Memorial Day, that it was a good thing. It was nice to see them as part of the community and it was nice. So thank you.
Yeah. Okay. Is there, so actually, before I get to the motion, I want to clarify why we're doing this. So we're making the motion retroactive to June 3rd, which encompasses the Iron Horse Half Marathon. I just wanted to clarify that they're, they were aware that they were going to likely be having this, this...
Yes, yes, they were aware.
Okay, I assume so. Just wanted, I wanted also to make sure that was...
Yeah, and, and it's interesting because Public Works has been involved in something like the marathon for years in bringing out barricades and things like that, and, and we've never charged for that, and this is the first thing that we've had to charge for.
Okay.
But, but as you said, Mike, it's, it's part of what the guys need to do in terms of public safety, so.
Okay. Is there a motion retroactive to June 3rd, 2018, to approve the proposed fee schedule for the use of public works, staff, and trucks at community events?
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and that passes. Item E and F are both items stemming from the Personnel Subcommittee, so I asked Chris to lead the discussion on both of these.
Yeah, so the first deals with recommendations as to acting town manager coverage, when our town manager per, you'll see in the charter, is not available in, for short periods of time and needs to identify someone. Specifically, what Maria saw was Chapter 5, Section 503(c) of the Charter, which provides for the town manager to appoint an acting town manager for periods of temporary absence of 15 or fewer days, consistent with policies established by the Board of Selectmen. The specific Charter language is, "In case of disability or temporary absences of the town manager, or in vacancy in the office of the town manager, the Board of Selectmen may designate an acting town manager, except the town manager may designate an acting town manager for temporary absences not to exceed 15 days, consistent with policies established by the Board of Selectmen." So in essence, the town manager for temporary absences identifies a temporary acting town manager. So what Maria wanted to do was bring her recommendation as to what the sequence of that backup would be, and she just had a brief conversation with the Personnel Subcommittee as a prelude to this. This is not something that we have to take action on. And specifically, what she's recommending is, the first person that she would designate would be the deputy town manager, which would be Melissa Appleby, and the second individual would be the director of Public Works, which would be Tom Roy. Both individuals whose scope of work are broad enough to justify this, as well as two individuals that are interacting consistently with Maria. So she wanted to just run that recommendation by this group to see if there were, you know, any reactions, or basically to get an endorsement of that. And as you can see in her packet, she has her, a sample of what her communication would be, and she's in a position to make that designation. So with that as a opening, I would open up any questions or comments.
I think it's good management. Puts it right out there so everybody knows what's going on, what the process will be.
Yeah.
I think it's a good thing.
Why, why wouldn't we just move forward with this? I mean, I don't, I mean, I don't want to delay. This is, this is, this has like almost zero applicability. I mean, relative to the instances that it will occur, it's incredibly logical, it provides structure and format.
Right.
You guys have looked through it, so what, what would we debate even more?
We don't need to debate. It's, it's per the Charter, it's actually the town manager's decision, so she's really just reviewing what her decision would be, just to get our feedback and input, so.
And for those absences greater than 15 days, it would be the same order?
Correct.
But it would need to come to the Board of Selectmen, right?
Right, exactly.
Okay, so it's just a procedural?
It's just procedural.
Yeah.
The Charter did have language around the manager designating acting town manager, but there were a few words that said, as I, excuse me, as consistent with the policies established by the Board of Selectmen. So I just, before I came onto a situation needing to designate someone, I just wanted to make sure that you were comfortable with that approach. Particularly, I was just thinking, this fall, the International City Managers Association, which is a professional association that Melissa and I belong to, has our annual professional development conference, and so, again, just sort of thinking ahead, that's a good for example of a time where either myself or both of us may, you know, temporarily be absent and out of state, or with the summer season approaching, if I happen to maybe go away for a few days and I'm going to be of considerable distance, again, where it makes sense to have somebody on site who could be available in the event of an emergency, or, again, if we need a signature on something. Again, if I'm going to be far away, I just want to make sure that there's somebody here who's capable, such as Melissa or Tom, who can sort of step in and just take care of those, those things, and make sure that the ship continues to, to move ahead, even if I'm not here, so.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So we're good?
We are good.
We are good.
Okay, yeah. So Chris, item...
Right. So, as you know, we have a requirement when there's turnovers in positions to review the job description. We have an individual that was in the position of land use and building clerk, part-time, who has accepted another position within the organization, and so what you have before is a job description, which has been reviews, reviewed with very mild, mild, minor changes. Most of those changes are specific to language that that role supports, you know, all of the land use staff, as opposed to the building officials specifically. So with that as a background, you know, I'll make a motion effective June 11th, 2018, to approve the proposed modifications to the job description for the part-time clerical position in the Planning and Community Development Department as presented, and for the job title for the position to be changed to land use and building clerk.
Second that.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and that passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Chris.
Yeah, thanks, Christopher.
That was good.
Moving on to item G and H, both relate to the Simsbury Performing Arts Center. The first is, is looking at their 2017 and 2016 audit. So section 16 of the Facility Operations Agreement between the town and the Simsbury Performing Arts Center requires the Performing Arts Center to perform an annual audit, and then to submit that audit to the Board of Selectmen. So with that, I wanted to see if any board members had any questions for Dave that he can answer. Hearing none. Is there a motion effective June 11th, 2018, to accept the Simsbury Meadows Performing Arts Center December 31st, 2017 and 2016 audit as presented?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and that passes unanimously. Item H is a proposed revision to their mission statement. So the Hartford Foundation for Public Giving and the Greater Hartford Arts Council have given grants to S-PAC for board assessment and strategic planning purposes, and one of the recommendations was that the mission statement be revised to be more concise. So, any, anything else you would want to add to that?
No, we, two years ago, we started talking about, you know, what should we be doing in developing ourselves as a board? The Hartford Foundation funded an assessment done by a consultant, and then he recommended that we do a strategic plan, and that we got a grant to do that, which we did, and the Hartford Foundation funded that. We brought in web associates who had done the consulting job for the town in 2012, I think it was 13. And we worked with them, and one of the recommendations was to focus our mission statement more precisely, along with our strategic plan, which was to focus on community events and to move on and hire an executive director. So that's the actions we're taking, and according to, accordance with our contract, we're asking for your approval of, of that change.
Any questions for, for Dave or, or comments on the mission statement?
Yeah, I just had a question, and I'm fine with it. I just noticed that the, the previous mission statement had a little bit more language about events and entertainment and culture, and this one is more broad. I just was interested, Dave, besides shortening it, the, kind of the, the area of focus, you know, what was the thinking around that?
Well, I think the, the recommendation of the consultant was that we, as a board, should focus more on fundraising and less on operation, and that we should hire an executive director, and we should focus on bringing funds in to support that activity, and that we should narrow our focus on not be so broad in our, in our mission statement. I don't think there's a great philosophical difference, it's really a semantic thing that was recommended. The board accepted it and said, okay, let's do that, and so we voted to do it.
And it says right in the, in the packet, no change in mission is applied, is implied by that, yeah. Any other questions? Okay. Is there a motion effective June 11th, 2018, to approve the revised mission statement of Simsbury Performing Arts Center, Inc., as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Thanks, Dave. And we're going to actually stick with Simsbury Performing Arts Center business as we move to appointments and resignations. Item A is the request to approve the following board members. So is there a motion effective June 11th, 2018, to appoint 10 members to the Simsbury Meadows Performing Arts Center Board of Directors as presented? Catherine Barnard, with a term expiring April 30th, 2021. Do I have to read these, or can we just say as presented?
I think you could probably say as presented, and then just the motion in the minutes would reflect the, yes, I'd say yes.
Okay, all right. That'll save us a little bit of time. Is there, is there a motion to approve as presented?
How's the public going to know who they are?
They're, they're in the packet, and this was public information.
But we're not, pardon, we're not privy to that.
This was posted on our town website, so this was made public.
It was posted prior to the meeting.
Is there a motion?
I'm, I'm, so moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, any opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Appreciate your, your help. That's going to do some advertising. We have an event on the 23rd, which is Simsbury Solstice, and there are four bands, it's going to go from three o'clock till, I think, nine on a Saturday. These are quite accomplished guys, and it's four different bands that are going to do. Grateful Dead, The Allman Brothers, Tribute to Santana, and the Tribute to Fish. Everybody knows them except me.
Selling yourself short.
And this is the, I'm sure you've seen this, everybody's on the mailing list, because we talk about a music festival, but on the 29th is the Celebrate America Concert, and of course, with good weather, we'll have thousands and thousands of people there, and it will end, of course, with fireworks. So we want to make sure everybody in the audience, everybody here, comes and enjoys that great event.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Fingers crossed for excellent weather on Fridays this summer.
Dave, quick, quick question. The ticket booth, is everything else swerved away there?
The ticket booth is in operation. The symphony is moving in at the end of this week, I think, and we'll set up their ticketing machines, and I don't know what their ticket, their booth schedule will be, but they'll be selling tickets from that, from that location.
I just, I, one other, I mean, I, is there, it seems like the, the fencing that exists currently from, if you take the stage and you follow the, the path around the road exiting onto Iron Horse, that...
Yes.
The fencing there is, looks a little temporarily suspect. I don't know.
We're going to revisit the layout of that. The objective was to try to move unticketed personnel out of the adjacent area to the stage, and we're going to put up a sign that says, "When you come in from the street, you can't go past the sign that says unticketed, will say unticketed personnel are not permitted beyond this point," and the actual ticket gate will be further in. But we're trying to prevent people from sitting out and not paying, which the promoters are very much in favor of.
In favor of.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure, it's all baby steps, so you can only get to so many projects one at a time, but I know that's not your, the permanent look, a solution that you have for that.
No, that...
People commented, comment on it quite often, you know, who are down there for other events outside of the, the wonderful events you guys sponsor down there.
Okay, well, we'll put that on our list of things to raise money for. We, we hadn't anticipated putting some higher fencing up with graphics on it, and we haven't found a way to raise the money for that yet. And then we have to go through everybody, design review, and so forth.
We love process.
It's a process, but hey, that's what we're here for.
So, Simsbury Performing Arts Center does have a, a full-time executive director, but we got to remember that not, this really wouldn't happen without the engine of your board, so thank you for you and, and your board's hard work.
Thank you, Ezra. Appreciate your support.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks. With appointments and resignations, item B, is there a motion to accept the resignation of Dante Valentino with our thanks as a member of the Juvenile Review Board?
So moved with, with our thanks. He was a big contributor. Interesting perspective.
Second. Thank you. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And item C is the proposed appointment of Andrea Erickson as a member of the Juvenile Review Board, and my understanding is that she has the same skillset that we're, that we're losing. So is there a motion to approve that appointment?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. D is the proposed appointment...
I just add one thing to that.
Yeah.
So just, also wanted to highlight for you. Kristin and I took an opportunity to go back and try and find the original policy or purpose for the Juvenile Review Board, particularly with an interest in learning about the membership composition, and what we discovered is that the policy for the Juvenile Review Board actually dates back to 1982, which we did include in the packet for you. It is quite dated, and we have made that a priority this summer to really, we've obtained samples, and we're working on an update to that policy, including membership composition, and so we will do our best to bring that to you later this summer.
Well, I will, I will share as the liaison to that group. It's an interesting group of people. We all kind of bring a different perspective, and it's, I think, at least from my seat, been successful with interacting with the young men and women that come before us, so I think it's good. Item D, is there a motion to appoint Grant Gritzmacher as an alternate member of the Conservation Commission/Inland Wetlands Agency?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And item E is the resignation of Woodrow Woody Edens as a regular member of the Housing Authority and Community for Care.
It just makes me sad.
It's a heartbreaker for you.
It is a heartbreaker for me. Well, I will make the motion to accept his resignation very reluctantly. Pastor Woody Edens has, he's been on the housing board as, as long as I've been there, and, which was before I was on this board, and his, his compassion and his willingness to step in wherever he is needed has always impressed me, and, and he is an inspiration to all of us volunteers, because he never, you know, he never stops to say, you know, should I do this or not? He's, he's always stepping up to help, and he doesn't matter which, you know, he doesn't care which party you're in, or what you look like, or anything else. He's going to try to help you and treat you with respect and dignity, no matter who you are, and particularly for those residents of, you know, Owen Murphy Apartments and Virginia Connolly, you know, a lot of people don't even know we have a housing authority, much less who lives there, and he has dedicated his time and talents to improving their situation, and I, for one, greatly appreciate it. And as for the Community for Care, he was my co-chair for a couple of years, and I will certainly miss, again, his compassion and his wise counsel as to how we present our information, and I'm sure Chris would, he might want to say something about Woody's participation.
Oh, absolutely. He's just very caring and a very wise person, so he will definitely be missed in the community overall, so.
Yes.
And he's retiring after about 40 years in ministry, and wish him the...
We do.
A lot of happiness in retirement.
Here.
So Cheryl, put the motion on the table. Would anyone want it? Chris?
I'll second.
Second it. All in favor? With our thanks.
With our thanks.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
I take it back.
And next is the review of meeting minutes. Any proposed changes to the minutes from a regular meeting on May 30th? I didn't see anything. Okay, then they'll stand as presented. Does anyone have any liaison or subcommittee reports that they wanted to share?
No, I...
Yeah, okay, and I think I shared mine, which is the Economic Development Commission ordinance. We hope to get to you in July for feedback. Okay. Communications, there was one item that I wanted to make sure that the board was updated on, and so you, you all sort of knew the thinking and the process, and I'm, I'm glad Kristin is here. So, whatever's, it's there. So that was something that the Aging and Disability Commission brought to the Board of Selectmen. And Kristen looked into it to try to understand how much staff time would this require. And in looking into it, you're basically proposing that there's another designation, which would be a senior center designation, which could potentially carry, you know, more weight, you wrote, and take a lot less time to obtain. So I'm interested in hearing a little of your thoughts on that, but I think the next step, since this originally came from aging and disability, would be to share that with them and get their thoughts on that, which I believe is going to happen tomorrow night.
Yes, I was just going to mention that, but I didn't want to say that if that wasn't the case.
Yeah.
So that would be good in case any members of the public want to attend Aging and Disability tomorrow night at 7:00 at Eno.
Sure. I can lead off and would welcome Kristen to jump in. So Kristen and I will be meeting with the Aging and Disability Commission tomorrow evening, providing an update on a number of the special projects and initiatives that we do have underway at the moment. Something that I felt that was important for her and I to share is that while both the AARP designation as well as senior center accreditation, I think would be worthy initiatives for us to undertake, we do have a bit of a staffing capacity issue at the moment with current projects and initiatives underway for social services for the summer and fall. We do have a considerable number of time-sensitive projects that we're working on. And we also have the very positive and wonderful addition of the new staff member so that we are working on that initiative in terms of preparing job descriptions, doing salary compensation analysis. So we will be bringing all of that to personal subcommittee. And within that context, there will obviously be some reorganization of duties for staff and onboarding that person. We are working also in the package tonight under communications. We have two wonderful trustees who have been helping with all of our social services trusts for over 35 years and they have decided to retire. So we need this summer to find new trustees, help onboard them, help train them. We're working on the Juvenile Review Board process. So again, we just, we have a number of initiatives underway that would make taking on either of these very significant initiatives at this time a bit difficult. And so again, we do plan just to give an update on all the good work that Kristen and her staff are doing outside of the normal day-to-day. And then also wanted to talk a little bit about why we were interested in the senior center, potentially accreditation. In part, you know, our understanding, and we're both new to the community, but our understanding, you know, has been that either building a new senior center or renovating the existing space at Eno has been an important priority for the community. And two advantages to the senior center accreditation that we've talked about is, one is the program assessment component. So we could really learn what we're doing well and what we're not doing so well. Again, hopefully positioning us well for that future project. But also what we've learned from other communities who do have the designation is it does improve our ability to raise funds outside of Town General Fund dollars for capital projects for senior centers. So again, that potential for positioning ourselves well to apply for small cities funding through DECD, to apply for private grants and other grant funding opportunities is that if we were able to obtain that designation, it does substantially improve our chances of being able to obtain grant funding for that project. So those were some of the thoughts we had discussed. I don't know, Kristen, if you wanted to add any?
No, I think that that's a really good summary. One of the things that Maria mentioned is looking at the large initiatives that we're undertaking right now in social services. And there are a lot of really good, wonderful programs and projects that we're working on and that's taking up the majority of our time, as you said, for summer and fall. And when I was asked to take a look at this, I looked at what would be the best next step for the social services and the senior center right now. And I think that one of the things that we can also consider is that if we have the senior center accreditation, that we can then use that as a building block towards the age-friendly community designation, which takes a lengthier time process than the accreditation. Accreditation can be done in about a year and the age-friendly community is about a five-year project. So, you know, if we take one at a time, it might be a good next step for us. So do you have any questions for me after this memorandum that you've digested?
Yeah, I have a couple. So one thought is to work on the senior center designation as a step towards the age-friendly designation. I mean, how seriously is that a consideration?
Well, I think that, you know, that's something to be answered by yourself as the board, as what steps you want us to take, as well as what steps the commission wants to continue to follow. Working on the senior center accreditation is something that's largely done by staff. It's mostly a self-assessment tool that's given to you through the NCOA and you look at all of your policies and procedures and programs and how they line up with other senior centers that are accredited. So after you've done that self-assessment tool, you have an outside representative that comes in and decides whether or not you've passed that accreditation. And as Maria said, that helps you to get grant funding and to have a more solid standing in the state. I think that there's a lot of value in the AARP age-friendly designation as a livable community. That's something that's coming up in a lot of communities is how livable is your community as our population ages. And you want to be able to attract and retain your seniors in your community. So I don't think that it's necessarily, I think that it is a good thing for us to look into, but since it's a longer-term project and as Maria said, we don't have the staff time to designate to forming it right now. And it is a much larger project. It's something where you're going to involve many stakeholders within the community and you're really going to be looking to improve the eight areas of livability upon which you are scored. So the other factor that I tried to consider was not only the time, but the financial impact to the town. Because to achieve that higher livable score, you're going to have to take on more projects that involve more than just my department. For example, looking at walkability. So how many streets have sidewalks and traffic lights and things of that nature, crosswalks, and what needs to be improved? So you might also be looking at talking about increasing Tom's budget to achieve that status.
Just, I had read the memo to be more, that the senior center designation was more value-added than the age-friendly community. But what you're presenting, if you are, I mean, because what came out is potentially one is a stepping stone to the other. And I think we should be pretty clear in the conversation with aging and disability which it is. And I know we're not, we wouldn't necessarily be making a decision right now, but I just think those are two very different recommendations, I'm pointing out. And I think a little bit of clarity, you know, tomorrow with aging and disability would be worthwhile. The other thing is, I see both as being worthwhile. I mean, we're working on a senior center, so clearly getting some tangible results with that makes total sense. At the same time, we have this vision of, you know, making Simsberry the greatest, you know, community in the world for seniors to live in and I can see the AARP one contributing to that. I do think that resources are an issue. I just wouldn't overstate, I'd like the initial discussion to be more grounded intellectually, which is the best one for Simsberry right now. As opposed to, you know, this one requires more resources as opposed to the senior center. And so that's, I just would hesitate to use that as a reason right now. And I am sensitive that so much of where we succeed in Simsberry is capturing the energy of people and groups that want to do things. And I just want, I just want to be sensitive to where the energy is and where the intellectual thinking on this is from the Aging and Disability Committee. In particular, if they were willing to step up and commit and put a lot of time and resources into it. So, you know, those are just some thoughts, you know, along the way.
Sure. I think you're going to have, I don't want to say bruised feelings, but, you know, the senior center discussion has gone on and on and on for the last 25 years and culminating over the last few years with numerous studies, program analysis, space analysis. I mean, all those things that you just mentioned were all done for, you know, when we were going to make a new senior center. And I'm concerned that that argument is going to fall flat for the people who put so much time and effort, all of those stakeholders who worked on the senior center for the last decade or so and ended up not getting anything, you know, that they wanted. So I would be sensitive to that, you know, when you are saying what, you know, the priorities are. You know, we've spent a lot of time and energy and volunteer work, you know, trying to get the senior center going and I think we should be sensitive to that effort.
And not knowing those efforts and the history being new, it sounds like some of that work that's already been done might tie nicely into both of these projects, but especially with the senior center accreditation, which is, like I said, it's largely a self-assessment tool. So if that work has already been done, then maybe this will be something that's a little bit, I don't want to say easier for us to accomplish, but will help us to accomplish that goal.
Well, that's what I mean. I think you should, you know, look to what we already have because we put a lot of effort into that. So it would be good if we could put that to a good use and.
Agreed. And not to reinvent the wheel.
Yes, exactly. Well, and it shows respect for the people who did all that work, you know, because a lot of seniors participated in that process as stakeholders and many of them will give you their opinions quite forthrightly on their own.
And that's great because this shouldn't be done in a vacuum.
Right. Yeah. I think to both Chris's and Cheryl's points, I think a lot of this has been done. I would encourage you not to just focus on the perception of the amount of effort because the good news is when you go to the meeting tomorrow night, if it's the two of you, you're both the new kid on the block. That's good news and bad news. But I think a number of things have been done and you will definitely hear from people about what they want and, you know, I don't think there's anybody sitting here who does not, would not prefer to have built a senior center. It was really how to fund it, how to pay for it. And, but I think what should be our next step is what I heard Chris say, not looking at the amount of work or the dollars, it's what should be the next step to move us closer to that. And that's what I would encourage you to do.
Thank you, Kristen.
You're welcome.
Yeah.
And the next item, I don't know if you want me to stay up? Oh, um, would you like us to speak at all to the trusts or?
Sure. Sure.
Sure. Oh, sure. So the, we have several trust funds that are monitored by the probate court and they are combined under the held and trusts. And we have had two trustees that have been with us, as Maria said, for over 30 years. And we met with them just a few weeks ago and they did convey to us that they felt that it was time for them to step down, respectfully so. And we were notified last week that they intend to tender their resignation at the close of actually this fiscal year, so at the end of June. So we did a little work, a little research with the probate court into the process to replace those two members and we feel comfortable in our understanding of that. And we are going to work on looking to members of the community that are considered to be held in the highest regard to fill those positions. And we'll move forward with making a recommendation to you and then to the probate court to fill those positions. We report to the Court of Probate typically in November, so hopefully we'll have enough time to find two new trustees and have them spend some time with the outgoing trustees so that they understand the process. So I'm hoping that it's going to be as straightforward as that.
How the, so clearly, how often, I haven't been around long enough. I'm not to say that you've been around terribly long, Chris. I didn't say that. No. How often does that position, those positions turn over? These trustee positions turn over?
Um, well, the trustee positions, those two trustees have been minced.
I heard that, 35. But I mean, we had, I hope we've had a little bit of turnover for 35 years other than that?
No. No, actually, no. No.
So then, I mean, do, is it, so you have to go through a new appointment process, I mean, as far as what is the specs for the trustee of the, of today and the future and such and the expectations of that person? And then clearly, I mean, for lack of a better term, marketing this, because I don't even, speaking to Cheryl's point earlier about the housing in town, I would say that how many people in this town even know that that trust exists, the function of it, those, the good work being done behind it, the intentions of it. And, you know, we could have an opportunity here to bring in people that, who have no idea that it exists, the opportunity exists, who are incredibly well-qualified for that. So I don't know how you get the word out, how you market it, but that seems like a wonderful opportunity for further community engagement by some extremely qualified and passionate people.
Sure, sure. So what's really interesting is the, our, this is our understanding of the history of the appointments through the current trustees is that it typically had been the Board of Finance Chair at the time, if they were serving as the Board of Finance and a vacancy happened, that that individual was approached. And if they were unable or unwilling to serve, that a person with a financial background and that the second position had traditionally been held by a local attorney. It's not saying that we have to do that, but that was just sort of the history or the tradition. And one of the, one of the wills, yes, I think of the Southwell Will, specifically designates that one of the trusts has to be a man, that the, that the will documents actually say that in perpetuity. So at least one of the trustees does need to be a man. So it's an odd sort of requirement, but I think that one dates back to the early 1900s.
Wow. I learn that new every day.
It's one of the largest.
Okay.
Amen.
Chris, I didn't mean to say that you've been around for.
Well, actually, they wanted to have two males and I stood up at that board meeting in 1900 and said, no, we need to be more open-minded than that.
Chris, you just lost your one vote to try to get on.
Women can't vote, so you can't be a trustee.
Hopefully, hopefully, that's an, I mean, as open a process as it can be, obviously delineated by those requirements. But, I mean, this is a fantastic opportunity for us to draw from, I imagine, some amazing talents that are, some gems that are out there in our community to support that going forward.
To qualify with people stepping down.
Absolutely. And we'll plan to keep you all updated. One of the things that we learned about the process from probate is that there is a board that's designated by probate and it's the board that would technically recommend the appointments. And we did list that in the correspondence, but that currently consists of Kristen, Tom Roy, our town attorney, our deputy town manager, Eric is actually on that and I feel like, oh, the Bank of America person that was, again, appointed by the court. So technically it would be that group with the recommendations to the probate court. And I'm sure that they'll, they'll do a good job to find some suitable folks for us.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other items under communications that anyone wanted to bring up? Okay. One item I just wanted to give folks a heads up about, I am interested in getting on the agenda in two weeks from now, a conversation about arranging a goal-setting session for this board, because I know that there was a lot of interest in that. But that could take a whole number of different forms. So I just wanted to plant the seed now that that'll be a discussion item so you can give some thought to what that would look like. I know I have some ideas and I've talked to a few members, but I'm interested in getting some feedback and then setting that up at some point this summer so we could really talk about what the next, like, year and a half of this term would look like and then other things that we, you know, other seeds we might want to plant that would bear fruit after, you know, the two years are up. So the last item is, is there a motion to adjourn to executive session with Maria Capriola, Melissa Appleby, Jamie Rabbit, Bob DiCriscenzo, and Jesse Langer to discuss the Deepwater Wind Appeal and also with attorney Jonathan Zellner to discuss T. Martin versus the town of Simsberry.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you, everybody for coming.
I'm reading through the people that are going to decide who these two people will be. Three of them are women. What are you doing?
Clockwork. Everybody's got to translate somebody. I think there was only 28 before.